I would like to reconvene the meeting from closed session and call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of December 21, 2021. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll and make the announcement about accessing the meeting?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar code ID number 89232513356. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Use *6 to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you please give the closed session report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. With respect to Item 1, Conference with Labor Negotiators, instructions were provided by council to the negotiator. With respect to Item 2, Initiation of Litigation, instructions were provided to council. No further report is necessary.
Thank you. The first item this evening is a presentation of the Lights, Sites, and Holiday Nights Contest winners. Mr. Posada, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Merry Christmas. Tonight, I am happy to present Lights, Sites, Holiday Nights in a different version. The Park Commission went ahead and did the presentations last week to the residents. It was just a calendar thing. We just weren't able to get the dates to coincide this Christmas. So, I'd like to ask the clerk if they could run the quick video, and we'll announce who the winners are, and also to let the public know that the maps are still available on the city's website for this year's honorees. Okay, and YouTube...this is available on the city's YouTube channel, so anyone can go on the city's website, hit the YouTube channel, and they can look through the lights. So, this year, the Best Decorated Rookie Award goes to the Gonzalez family at 1023 West Cypress. They're the first-time winners of this award. They did a great job. The next category was Christmas in the Country, and that was won by the Price family at 526 Bosco Court. Great display, lots of lights, a great place for the family to go by and enjoy the lights. The homespun holiday category award goes to the Cosmata family at 801 South Miller Street. They're new to Santa Maria, but they jumped right into the decorating contest. They even have snow at their house. So, it's been great. Simply Christmas Award...I'm sorry. California Dreaming Award goes to the Salinas family at 225 South Oakley Street, and they have a top-to-bottom, wraparound, corner-to-corner house, and they've done...they just did it all over. The Simply Christmas Award goes to the Melena family at 1051 West Stoll Road. Huge displays. Again, they just got totally into it. The Melena family has been coming back every single year with decorations, and it's not just this address of the Melena family. It's like every house in the Melena family does their decorating. So, Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for the opportunity to present these to you. Next year, hopefully, timing will work out better, and we can bring them all here to the council to get their awards directly from the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Posada. I thank all the families for participating. It's really a treat. And look it up on the...on our website and go visit all of these beautifully decorated The next item is on our agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. And Madam Mayor, before we move on, I'd like to note that staff received written comments from Pat Gates and Cliff Solomon encouraging the City Council to add a rent stabilization ordinance for mobile homeowners to a future agenda. Additionally, Mr. Solomon indicated his support for the recent Police Department strategic plan, however, requests that the City Council also encourage that the Police Department develop effective communication tools for all Santa Maria residents and that the Police Department staff and officers get proper implicit bias training. And we have three requests to speak at this time.
Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Peggy Brierton, followed by Esther Jensen. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena, Mr. Mobile State's 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners. November 6, 2018 was the date of the first City Council meeting that I stood at this podium and asked you to put fair, responsive, and meaningful rent stabilization on the agenda. We ask that the 1999 model lease and all of its favorable provisions be made enforceable and formalized. Instead, on November 19, 2019, you delivered a park owner-developed model lease, 2020, and an enforcement agreement. The lease is a radical departure from the terms of the 1999 model. The enforcement agreement and the insidious final version of its provisions was developed in secrecy and signed by park owners prior to the mobile homeowner ever reading it. Now, two years later, only six of 15 Santa Maria parks, representing 69% of the total spaces, are participating. We estimate as few as 20 total spaces are participating out of a possible 1,082. Our attorney, Mr. Bruce Stanton, spoke to you on December 7 and provided his assessment of why he believes the participation rate is so low. Some of his nine reasons are as follows. Residents were ignored during the final negotiations. They do not trust the process or feel invested in it. The 100% CPI annual rate adjustment exceeds what a majority of jurisdictions with indexed rent adjustments allow. Most have no minimum percentage or floor. Sorry, my mask is obstructing my breathing. Pass-throughs are allowed in addition to annual base rent adjustments for property taxes without any protection from inter-entity change of ownership. The 7.5% resale increase that is allowed as opposed to what's typical in the state of 0% to 5%, and as a reminder, La Maria Mobile Home Park has 10% increase at resale. Apparently, nine parks have no intention of participating since it's purely voluntary. We know that the 2019 10-year leases were expiring, and residents were being rushed to sign 10-year renewals prior to the availability of the model lease. Madam Mayor, it's been reported that you support the model lease and believe it to be an adequate answer to rising space rents in mobile home parks. In light of the low participation rate and as flawed as our attorney has itemized, I find your position somewhat unbelievable and very disappointing. According to the...may I finish?
Go ahead and finish, Mr. Hall.
According to the municipal code, additional duties and obligations of the mayor include the authorization to request that the city manager place item or items on the council agenda, and I urge you to open new discussions to consider either our proposed mobile home rent stabilization ordinance or at least fix and renegotiate the model lease and the enforcement agreement. Only in this way will all mobile home residents be afforded the ability to have their homes and equity protected. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for your continued service.
Thank you. Peggy Brierton, followed by Esther Jensen.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
My name is Peggy Brierton. I'm a resident of Santa Maria and live in a mobile home park. I realize that you spent time and money on this model lease agreement just a few short years ago, and this is the last thing you want to be distracted with. But the model lease should be brought back to council for discussions and changes. The owner of our mobile home park signed the model lease agreement in 2019 but failed to comply with the agreement. 3.2 of the model lease reads in part, "Owners shall also provide copies of this agreement to all new approved residents of its mobile home park." However, we were not told about or given copies of the model lease when we purchased our home in August of 2020, more than six months after the owner of the park signed the model lease agreement with the city. The model lease has a vacancy clause of 7.5%. That's giving...that would give us a $61 increase per month over the past owner's rent. The 10-year lease that we signed, and we were told we needed to sign, we did, had a vacancy clause of 10%. That's $86 increase per month from the past owner. The model lease would have cost us $25 less a month. Compounded over the life of the lease, it does add up. Continuing with the flawed voluntary approach is bad policy, something Santa Maria should never allow. Please put this much-needed item on a future agenda for some discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Esther Jensen from La Maria Mobile Home Park. The rainy season is upon us. If you drive into our park, you'll notice the streets are full of potholes. You'll also notice that what used to be the green space has been placed with gravel. The rent keeps going up, the park keeps going down. The monies taken in are used for furthering the park owner's interest in not being used to keep up the park. We used to have a park that we were proud to be called home. Now, not so much. Why does he need to keep raising the rents and not putting anything back into maintaining the park? What about the residents that are trying to move safely around the park with scooters and walkers? Who's concerned about their safety? I think it's time for the city to step in and start looking closer at the conditions we are involved in. High rents, but substandard conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment portion of this agenda. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read Item Number 3?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of councilmembers.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to adopt the consent calendar as submitted.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve a general plan land use map amendment and zone change for people's self-help housing.
Okay. Staff report is to be made by Director of Community Development, Mr. Ring.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have a request for a general plan land use amendment and zone change. The applicant is people's self-help housing. The project is located at 3170 Santa Maria Way. The project site is this flag lot that you see here on this map. The location is south of the intersection of Santa Maria Way and Miller and north of the intersection of Santa Maria Way and College. The property is 8.89 acres. This is an aerial photo of the property. It's surrounded by residential neighborhoods, Rolling Hills Estates, Sunrise Hills. There is a vacant property to the north of the existing residential neighborhood. That's the Northman subdivision that was approved for single-family homes a couple years ago. To the south, there's a mobile home park that's located in unincorporated Santa Barbara County. The residential homes on the west side of Santa Maria Way are also in the county. This is the existing land use classification. It is commercial, and this is the proposed land use for single-family residential. The various acronyms, LMDR, just indicates whether it's low density or low, moderate density. And correspondingly, the existing zoning is PDC2, in essence, commercial, and the proposed change is PDR1, which is single-family residential. These are some considerations for the proposed land use and zone change. The property owner has expressed that the existing highway drive-in is no longer financially profitable. In addition, the proposed single-family residence or residential use is consistent with the surrounding residential uses and shares common characteristics of single-family structures and front yard landscaping. Other commercial uses beyond the existing drive-in would not be consistent with the surrounding residential uses and would generate greater impacts, including but not limited to traffic, noise, and illumination. The existing property also has limited public street frontage and would not be conducive to other commercial uses. Last of all, the existing commercial zoning opens the possibility for an SB 35 housing project. You may be aware, there is an SB 35 project north of this project site at the corner of Miller and Santa Maria Way, and what SB 35 projects essentially are allowed to bypass the public hearing process and may receive building permits if the project is an affordable housing project and if they use prevailing wage. This is a state law mandate, and the reason why this property opens that possibility is that the commercial designation of the...of Santa Maria zoning code allows for studio projects within the commercial zones, and somebody could potentially leverage that to build a high-density apartment project under the existing commercial zone. The proposed single-family zoning would prohibit that and would keep the future uses to a single-family use. So, with these considerations, this is a fairly wordy slide for the recommendation, but essentially, it's...
Mr. Ring?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo had a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you're saying that it would not be feasible to put any commercial...if this change happens, that would not allow to have any other commercial activity in that area?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Escobedo. So, correct. That's correct. The single-family residential zone really limits the future uses to single-family residential. The city's commercial zoning does allow for some residential, either as in a mixed-use format or for studio apartments by itself. So, commercial allows for both commercial and residential, but residential only allows for residential only.
Yeah, thank you.
This slide includes the Planning Commission's recommendation. The first recommendation is approval of the SEQA document, the mitigated negative decoration. The second recommendation is for the general plan land use policy map from community commercial to low-medium density residential, and recommendation number three is the corresponding change of zoning from general commercial to single-family residential. This concludes staff's presentation. Welcome any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Ms. Waterfield?
So, I just want to clarify that the commercial that where it is right now, they could go in right now and do studios without any...without...just as a over-the-counter permit.
Mayor, Councilman Waterfield, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and so then what we're doing is we're putting more restrictions for residential and not high-rise...not high-rise apartments out there. So, the zoning would be beneficial for the surrounding residents if we moved for residence zoning.
The proposed request for single-family residential would keep it as single-family residential.
Okay, great. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is the People's Self-Help Housing the only applicant for this zone change, Joe?
Councilman Cordero, People's Self-Help Housing is the applicant for this zoning change request. They have intentions for a future subdivision project of 49 single-family homes on this property if the land use and zone change were to be approved.
I am aware of other projects that they've been involved with, and I've been very supportive in the past of People's Self-Help Housing. It's a great organization by many respects, but there seems to be a breakdown in the caring for some of the properties and the problems that seem to have been associated with some of the properties that they've developed in the recent years, and that the problems that I'm getting back at my level are somewhat criminal in nature, a lot of people hanging around outside of the projects, and generally just disrupting the people that are already established in the neighborhood and have been so established in the neighborhoods for quite some time. So, that kind of concerns me that, for whatever reason, and I don't know whether there's a management change or what's caused it, but it...you can't just expect to build and develop something and then say, "Well, turn it over to the police and let them fix it." I mean, some of it has to do with an overall management kind of thing. So, that is very concerning for the neighboring developments that are already established in the areas.
Mayor, Councilman Cordero, we do have representatives from People's Self-Help Housing here that can answer some of your questions and comments.
Okay. Thank you.
And Ms. Waterfield has a question.
I have more of a comment than a question. I did meet with Self-Help Housing about a year and a half ago, and I was...I was concerned about the process of everything. I have not come across any problems with Self-Help Housing. I look at the Ted Zennich project. That's a beautiful project. It's a three strikes, you're out. That's been handled that way, and my concern was, okay, so are you guys going to have any kind of overseeing of this...of this housing project? And I understood, and rightfully so, no, because the people are buying these homes for themselves. They're going to take care of these homes. They're not going to go in, build a home, especially in today's time, and then make it, you know, trash it out. So, it gives the lower people...lower income, make it more affordable for them to go in and purchase a house. So, I understood it that way, and I think that the...I think this is much better than just leaving it commercial and allowing studios to go in, and that would just be horrible for the residents around there. I believe these people who will be buying these homes will take care of this...these homes and do a great job, and with Self-Help Housing just being historically great in everything they do, I don't have...I don't have an issue with it.
Is there someone here from People's Self-Help Housing that can speak? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Flores from People's Self-Help Housing. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. We're very excited about the possibility of a single-family for-sale development in Santa Maria. The last time we built...the only time we built for-sale homes was over 30 years ago. So, we're very excited. We have over 5,000 people who have requested to sign up on our interest list that want to build a house over the last, you know, 20-some years. Some of those people may have gone on and been able to acquire the house. I don't know, and haven't been pre-qualified, but there's a huge interest in living and being a homeowner in Santa Maria. I'm not aware, Councilman, I'm on the homeownership side of People's Self-Help Housing. I'm not as familiar with the rentals, but I know we have...at our rentals, we have very strict controls. We have onsite managers, and we do call the police if there's an incident to keep things calm. So, I would like information that I could pass along to our property management if you have more specific information. As far as the homes we built over 30 years ago, many of those, you know, the people that built have moved on, passed on, maybe to another life, and some of those may be rented now, and you're right, we do have strict CCNRs that we try to enforce, but, you know, you can't...they're kind of difficult to enforce. This proposed project will have a homeowners association. A prior one did not, so with a homeowners association, you do have a little more teeth. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have about that.
That was in the north side, right?
I don't know. Where did you build...where did you build those homes? You said 30 years ago.
It's at the north end of town.
Northwest, right?
Northwest side of town. I'm trying to think of the streets.
Yeah, they got a Caballo Way and some...on that area, close to the...
Further in the north.
There's a park. It's...I want to say it's near Corn Dyke or...
We got Grogan Park. Grogan Park.
Oh, Grogan...by Grogan Park?
Yeah. Yeah, by the way, just a message. I...that's my district, and some of the people that still live there, they enjoy their homes. It's a nice neighborhood. Everybody really united because of...they were asking for it, so they know each other through...because it was a process. So, some of them already passed out, but it's a really nice neighborhood.
Well, let me ask you this. So, you...they...say they qualify, whatever the process is to qualify. Are they required to stay in that house for a period of time?
No, they are not unless we have certain financing that dictates that, but generally not. They work to build their house, so they have a equity that they've invested in, and they are allowed to sell at any point in time. I said at the Planning Commission meeting that in the last 25 years, the homes that have been built, 90% of the families still live in those homes. After that, the stats go down a little bit because of, you know, people aging in place. But they can't...because they could sell their house, take their equity, it still may be very difficult to purchase another home at their level of income or, you know, different financial terms. So, they do tend...and they have tremendous pride in building these homes, and they're very satisfied, so they don't sell nearly as often as the general market.
Yeah, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, it's more like a recommendation or something to look into. One of the complaints I received from that area is that when they built the house, they had this agreement, really odd agreement, where everybody shared one part of the front part of the house. Like the garden, they shared the garden at the front, and everybody had the agreement, and everybody was good until somebody sold the house, and the new owner said, "Oh, this is my...this is the line of my property," and they put a, you know, a fence. So, that's kind of like generated a little bit of, you know, friction between neighbors. So, I think that it would be appropriate for me to just give that a kind of a heads-up and input, so maybe that can be avoided in this new development if it's approved and it actually built.
The homes in Oak Valley, what we call that development, were zero lot lines, so I think there may have been, but it should have been a recorded agreement that said, "You have an easement over this property, and you take care of it even though your neighbor owns it."
Yeah.
It could have been along those lines.
I've never seen something like that, so that was really...
Those are only zero-lot-line homes we've ever built, but yeah.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you. Do you, do you still have some of the people that want to buy the homes actually help in the, in the physical construction of the homes?
Yes, our model, which is done in the rural areas, is that the homeowners actually do 65 to 70% of the work to build their homes. And they work on each other's homes, we'll have a group usually of 10 homes, and they'll all work on each other's home, so that if we train someone, you know, how to frame windows, they'll do it in all 10 houses, and somebody else will do another task.
I actually have some good friends that built a house many years ago, or helped build houses many years ago, and, and now have moved on to where they still have that house, but now they have a couple of other houses. So they've really profited off of the, the good fortune they got in working with People's Self-Help Housing, so. And that's, you know, certainly a good story, but if you leave a card with somebody, I'd be glad to call you on some of the other ones, it's just too, too lengthy to go into here, and then you can deal with the information that I give you.
Okay, that'd be great. Mr. Albro has my contact information, or I can email you directly.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I would like also to have the, the information, the contact information.
Great, thank you. You can help us recruit, and we're ready to recruit, if you approve today and our plan or our subdivision gets approved.
I guess, you know, my concerns, if we leave it as the current C2, which is a general commercial, that anything could be built in there and doesn't even have to be approved by the city council or the planning commission. So I think we have that choice, or we can approve this today, where people come in and build single-family homes. It's, it's really nice to be in a neighborhood where people have invested into their homes, and so you don't have necessarily renters. I think homeowners tend to keep better care of their property, and because they've invested it, they're proud of what they're doing. And I, I brought the arena allocations number, is this considered very low or low income?
We house both. We usually try to house up to 40% very low and the remainder at 60%, but it depends a little bit who applies and the cost of the project.
Because in the very low, we have 1,032 units that we have to allocate for, and, and then above, moderate, above moderate, we have over 3,000. So we do, we do have a small portion of the very low that we need to allocate for, and so I think this is, I think this is really a, I hope this is really a good project. I would hate to see, like with Mr. Cordero said, and have it fall apart. And I know that it, when they manage things, they do a very, People's Self-Help Housing does a very good job of managing, and I think that's important, because you can have apartments here in town that are not managed well, that are a market rate, and you have problems in it. So, you know, we have no guarantees on that.
We can reach the lower incomes if the city provides us with home or other type of funds to provide us additional down payment that helps them qualify. So we can talk more about that later.
Yes. Conversation tab.
Any other questions, comments? No questions or comments? Okay, let's see. I'll open up the public hearing. Madam Kirk, do we have any speakers or any communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff received written correspondence from Pam Gates, Alejandro Mahoney, Cliff Solomon, and Noah Garcia, in support of the project and the zone change citing the need for more housing in Santa Maria. Lori Mariscal wrote in opposition to the project citing traffic issues and concern for dropping property values. And we have one request to speak on this item at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Graham.
Good evening. My name is Jarrett Graham. I'm the son of Diane Grand, who is the owner of the highway drive-in. I'm here on her behalf to give our support to People's Self-Help Housing and their request for the zoning change. My parents have owned the highway for over 40 years, and the drive-in theater business has unfortunately been in decline for the last several years for many different reasons, including but not limited to competitions such as the Regal 14 right next to us, streaming services such as Netflix, and unfortunately, the rising costs lately especially of just trying to run a business. We have approached many different movie exhibitors to see if anyone would be interested in purchasing the theater as a theater and operating it as a drive-in theater, but we have not had any interest. We have spoken to several developers, but only People's Self-Help Housing has the desire to develop it as single-family homes. All other developers were interested in multi-story, multifamily types of developments. As, as you can see from the presentation, the drive-in is surrounded by single-family homes, and we feel that the highest and best, the most compatible use of the property is as single-family homes. So please accept the planning department's, planning commission's recommendation to change to residential zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to say that I have so many fond memories of the, of the drive-in, and I am sad that it's going away, but I hope you can tell them that.
I, I won't, I'll tell my mom.
So many great memories as a kid growing up.
I really appreciate that. My dad has owned and operated five drive-in theaters. He passed away over 15 years ago, and my mom has always wanted to keep his, his dream alive, even at 84 years old. And we, my brother works in the business, and he certainly wanted to continue to operate it as a drive-in theater, and we've tried everything we could, but we just can't make it work.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to council for any discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to adopt a resolution adopting a mitigated, mitigated negative declaration and mitigating monitoring program for the People's Self-Help Housing Amendment to the general plan land use policy map and zoning map for approximately 8.89 acres located at 3170 Santa Maria Way.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Cordero?
Sorry.
All right, the question's the same before or after. Probably Mr. Chen there, what, do you know of anybody that's done any surveys or anything to, to discuss the traffic mitigation issues, if any?
Councilman Cordero, there was a traffic analysis that was done as part of this request, and it's no, no significant impacts related to the proposed change.
Okay. We've looked at it, or somebody's looked at it, and, and they're not pulling their hair out over any problems or anything.
No.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, this is probably, I, I want to ask a question and not discussion. How much are these homes going to cost?
If you could predict lumber prices, it'd be more accurate, but we are aiming at $400,000.
$400,000. Okay, and that's, what size, two and three bedrooms, or what size?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms.
Yeah, there may be some fours, too. We usually build about 20.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you with that mask on. You said three and some fours?
Three and some fours. We usually build about 20% four bedrooms and the rest three.
Oh, okay, and garages?
Yeah, two-car garages with room to park in the driveways.
Good, okay, $400,000 is affordable. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to ask. Okay, so any other questions, discussion?
We got a first and a second.
We got a first and a second. Madam Kirk, can you please call the roll?
Wait.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
If it's, if it's the desire of the council, Councilmember Soto, could amend her motion to include the other two recommendations unless you want to vote on the three separately?
I'll amend my motion to include all of the recommendations. Move the recommendations. To move all three recommendations.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Madam Kirk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next, we have another public hearing to consider. Madam Kirk, could you please read the title?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as soon as I can turn my page, just a moment. The city council will consider adding new Chapter 821 to Title 8 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code regulating mandatory organic waste disposal reduction.
Staff report is to be made by Utilities Director, Mr. Springer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. It's my pleasure to come before you, right before Christmas, Merry Christmas. This evening, we're going to give a presentation. Mr. Herb Cantu is with us, he's the city's solid waste manager and well-educated on this subject. So tonight, we're going to give a presentation, we'll be happy to answer questions of the council after that, then we'll be asking for a public hearing, and then for the city council to introduce the ordinance for a first reading, and then continue to a future meeting for adoption. So with that, I'll turn it over to Herb. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. Can everybody hear me okay? Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Today, we will be presenting the mandatory organic waste reduction ordinance as required by Senate Bill SB 1383. Senate Bill SB 1383, also known as the Short-lived Climate Pollution Regulation or Reduction Act of 2016. This is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in the last 30 years This regulation was enacted to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, such as methane. CalRecycle considers methane as one of the most potent greenhouse gases and contributes to climate change. Landfilling organic waste results in anaerobic digestion of organisms, which generates methane and other gases. According to CalRecycle, landfills are responsible for 21% of the state's methane gas emissions. Landfills are considered the third-largest producer of methane gas in California. Methane is 84 more times potent than carbon dioxide over a 30-year period. Based on a 2018 waste characterization study conducted by CalRecycle, approximately 24 million tons or 52% of organic waste was landfillled. Food waste was approximately 6 million tons or 13% of that waste stream. This regulation gives CalRecycle authority to adopt regulations to reduce organic waste by 50% from 2014 baseline levels. This was required in 2020. This goal has yet to be achieved. The regulation also requires a 75% reduction of organic waste disposed in landfills by This regulation has, is also in progress. Since we haven't met the 50%, our new target is 75%. This is equivalent to approximately 20 million tons annually. Additionally, this regulation requires by 2025 a 20% reduction or reduction of currently disposed edible food to be recovered for human consumption. So edible food is food products that are consistent with California retail code. This is not food scraps that you would traditionally put in your green waste container for composting. This is considered food that would be resellable or donated to an organization or a food bank Items that are considered organic waste include food scraps. Sure.
Look, they're not onions, right? At least that's why worms don't like them.
I believe Ms. Soto is home composting, is that correct? The her worms may be a little picky, that is correct.
Ms. Waterfield has a question.
So we're talking about the methane. So how much methane gas is going to the hospital, and will that affect?
That's an excellent question, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Waterfield. Our gas today that we produce at the landfill, about anywhere from 60 to 80% is collected and sent to the hospital, that is used, that is utilized to generate power for the hospital. The remaining 20% is either processed onsite with an additional engine to generate power, or we have to flare any residual balances. Flare is essentially thermally destroying the excess gas. Now, there's a fluctuation of gas generation throughout the years or throughout the season. Wintertime, it's not as, demand for landfill gas is not as high at the hospital. Summertime, it increases due to the additional cooling units that are running to cool the facility. So this regulation will impact that project over time. That is correct. We will have a reduction in generation of landfill gas for beneficial reuse such as power for the hospital.
So the state doesn't give any municipality any credit for using their methane gas in a proper way, so it's, I mean, I'm listening to this, and you can't, you know, you can't make this stuff up, and so you're just, it's just crazy.
That, that is correct. They don't recognize this as a beneficial reuse. I'm referring to CalRecycle and the state. They do not recognize this as a beneficial reuse to the community.
So they'd rather have maggots growing in your green waste, then?
We're, we're hoping to address that through our outreach here.
Okay, I want you to repeat that. How much do we export or deliver to the hospital?
Anywhere from 50 to 80% of what we generate will go to the hospital.
58%.
50 to 80%.
50 to 80.
Okay, and then you said we use some at the landfill?
Yes, we do use some at the landfill. We have an additional engine onsite that generates power to the grid, and there's also some surplus gas that is combusted or destroyed via a flare.
Okay, and then we have the flare.
That is correct.
And the whole purpose is, one of the purposes is to get rid of the methane?
That is correct. CalRecycle considers methane very potent and generates greenhouse gases.
And so they're ignoring the fact that we get rid of the methane?
Would you like that?
That's accurate, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
You are correct. Madam Mayor, the, the way the legislation was passed was to prevent landfills from creating methane or gas at the landfill. In order to do that, they want to take the organics out of the landfill. It does not take into consideration whether or not that gas generated at a landfill is put to beneficial use, much to Councilmember Waterfield's comments. So in this case, regardless of the beneficial reuse of the gas that is used from the Santa Maria regional landfill, we are still compelled to meet these organic diversion requirements by law.
Thank you.
And to help add to Mr. Springer's clarification, not, not all landfills are equal, I should say. Some landfills do an excellent job of managing landfill gas. Some other sites aren't as compliant. We, as a city, have high standards and comply with all the applicable regulations, and we are utilizing the gas as effectively as we can, but there are other organizations, mainly private entities who are very large, that do not comply with certain components of the regulation. I won't be specific as to whom, but it gives a black eye to the entire industry. So we are collateral damage essentially for this regulation.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you know efforts to better recognize the, the things that we're doing here in Santa Maria that Ms. Waterfield is referring to? Do you know of any efforts to, to recognize communities are, are in the process of mitigating this problem on their own? And, and to some degree, to a profit to, to the community? So anything at all? Or is it just the law is written and that's the way it is, and there's no effort?
Essentially, the law is written as it is. We are looking at opportunities for how to utilize or how to manage this new regulatory requirement. There are newer technologies out there that incorporate digesters that take in food waste to create, to create methane that will also generate power. Those solutions aren't 100% perfect. It's evolving technology. So we are monitoring those types of technologies, and in the future, we may recommend or adopt something to help us mitigate organic waste that will be considered a renewable solution versus our current solution today.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just to provide a brief overview of the legislative timeline, the regulation or the law was adopted in 2016. The final regulatory text was drafted by CalRecycle in November 2020. The final regulatory text was drafted by CalRecycle in November 2020. In January 2021, CalRecycle released a model or template ordinance for jurisdictions to utilize. So we worked off that template and developed the ordinance that you have before you today. Additionally, in January 2022, jurisdictions must adopt an ordinance with the regulations or consistent with the SB 1383 requirements. And lastly, the regulations take effect starting January 2022. Just to highlight a few jurisdictional requirements. We are required to collect organic waste for both residential customers and commercial businesses. We will also be required to update our inventory for our container coloring system. If...for those who live in the city of Santa Maria, our green waste containers have a gray base with a brown lid. Those will be updated to an all-green container. For our refuse containers, we have a gray base with a green lid. Those lids will be replaced and updated to a gray container. That is correct. So your refuse will be an all-gray container. Your recycling container in the future will remain an all-blue container or a gray base with a blue lid. And then ultimately, we will be converting green waste to a all-gray...green container, excuse me. We are also able to do this through attrition and phase out the containers as they exceed their useful life. So we don't have to procure them all immediately starting in January 2022. CalRecycle has granted us a grace period of approximately seven to eight years. The city must also implement an edible food recovery program. We are also required to procure recovered organic waste products. We are also required to conduct education and outreach and monitor compliance and enforcement for the SB 1383 regulations. I will also go into detail in each of these categories in the future slides, but just to give you a brief overview of the requirements.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Escovedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there any...anything from the state that, you know, they want us to do the outreach, the education and so on and so forth? Is there any...anything that they will do aside from just writing the law? Like in terms of, you know, maybe bring some resources to the city, anything like that?
No. So I will say...so there's...
Just want to make the point.
I will say the...there will be forthcoming grants available to help us mitigate some of these issues. They have not been released yet. So we will be watching very closely on grants that become available to help us procure maybe equipment, hire staffing, help us with developing the edible food recovery program. So we will be watching for grants. Prior to the implementation of the law, as well as the regulatory text, there is what's called a SWANA group. It's a solid waste association in California that is actively involved when regulations are being developed for the waste industry. We were working very closely with CalRecycle conveying our concerns with the requirements of the regulations. But ultimately, some items were heard and addressed. Many were not addressed, and so we are essentially dealing with the final product.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Waterfield?
I can't help but think that I bet the garbage disposal industry is just so crazy and wonder supports this whole thing because guess what's going to happen to our sewer system, Shad? It's...I mean, everyone's going to start throwing it out the...down the drain.
No, we're going to have a police.
Oh, we're going to have a police. That's right.
I was sure if you were going to respond, Shad.
I just...it's just going to cause so much more chaos to our system, our sewer system and everything else.
Yeah. I certainly agree that the, you know, the potential for people to more heavily utilize something like, you know, InSyncerator or a garbage disposal, which pushes more effort toward our wastewater plant and impact on our sewer system, that potential is certainly there. And I would also point out that Mr. Cantu is being very modest. He has been very active in SWANA from when...
What does SWANA stand for?
Solid Waste Association of North America. So there is a California chapter that has members from Southern California, Central California, as well as Northern California. And every month, we are having conference calls discussing regulations that are proposed. And any given year, there's anywhere from 50 to 70 solid waste bills that are being drafted in the state that impact landfills, impact collection operations and recycling requirements. That's...and then obviously typically in any given year, there's roughly about 2,000 bills that are drafted in Sacramento for various other policies.
So Mr. Cantu has been active in that organization and hold office as well at a regional level in that. So as to Councilmember Cordero's question, as 1383 was being drafted and working its way through Sacramento, the city, through Mr. Cantu and these sorts of things, were making comments and trying to provide a sense of, here's how it's going to play in Peoria or this is where the rubber hits the road. This is where it's going to impact our residents. We had that opportunity. We did that through SWANA when it was going through the legislature. Once again, after it was passed and CalRecycle was working on regulations, we commented heavily on it through these organizations to attempt to ameliorate the impact to our ratepayers and our system and also for them to kind of recognize how, you know, how this is going to impact us as we go. But as Mr. Cantu mentioned, in the end, they came up with the model ordinance that fulfills all of the requirements of 1383 and this is where we're at today.
So it fell on deaf ears then?
There are significant portions that are still difficult or expensive to achieve that weren't addressed. Some of the other ones were, but yes, this is where we are.
Thank you, Shad.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you...do you know in your involvement with the organization, whatever the acronym was that you used?
Sure.
Do you know of any communities that have ended up with any health problems as a result of storing this stuff? I think Ms. Waterfield briefly mentioned they'd rather have maggots growing in there. Have you had anything like that come up where they say, well, I'm only doing what the city says to do and now you've got these rats and stuff that are coming here to eat this material that is now growing? And I mean, I don't think I'd want that outside of my house.
That's right.
Where this stuff is starting to reproduce and grow as a result of the...I'll call it filth that we're allowing to build up. So I'm not sure how much we're helping and how much we're hurting here.
Sure, Councilmember Cordero. An EIR was conducted for this regulation and there was no documentation or responses that were drafted that conveyed those concerns. It met all the requirements. It checked all the boxes and it was ultimately approved. One of the things that we will be working on to help address those or mitigate those concerns is there will be significant outreach to the community. I will be coming up to a slide here in a few regarding a pilot program that we conducted since April of 2021 to help mitigate those concerns. We did have an area of roughly about 1,600 customers that we partook in a residential organics pilot program. There was significant outreach regarding how to mitigate maggots, odors. We did...
Rats.
Rats. We did provide education on utilizing simple green in the bottom of your container to help minimize a small amount of simple green. You could also refrigerate your food waste or freeze it for a period of time. And then the night before your service, you could take it out and put it into your green waste container. So it definitely requires significant changes in how we manage our food waste today. We're used to obviously putting it into our garbage disposal unit or into our trash can. We definitely will have to work on our habits on how we maintain our food waste. It's a significant change in our culture in managing food waste.
Okay, thank you.
And I will also say, we did conduct...we have been conducting organics collections for businesses since 2016. And we are servicing those containers. They are dirty and filthy. Businesses are required to maintain their cleanliness, but we have not had complaints... if the lids are maintained and closed, we have not had complaints regarding maggots or rodents. We've been very fortunate there. I also will say that we have a very forgiving climate. We don't get very hot like the Central Valley where I came from. So I'm very grateful to be here on the Central Coast. And that also helps minimize some of those concerns that residents have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Some additional requirements for the jurisdiction. We must provide an enforceable mechanism that complies with the baseline requirements of the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. We also are required...we also have recycling requirements for construction and demolition materials mixed with organic waste related to the California Green Building Standard Code. Fortunately, we already have ordinances that comply with these two requirements so we can check the box regarding these two categories. We already have a Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance as well as our California Green Building Standards. In addition to these requirements, the Santa Maria Regional landfill will be required to submit an annual organic disposal status reduction report to CalRecycle by January 2023. We will also be required to conduct quarterly refuse container audits. So this basically entails us verifying how well customers are participating and complying with the program. Every quarter, we will be required for our incoming waste that we collect from the residents to conduct a waste characterization of approximately 200 pounds of material and go through that waste and identify what percentage is organic and other materials to ensure that we are being successful in our compliance. Apartments, multifamily dwellings are one of our most difficult areas for complying, not only with what will be organics, but it's currently a challenge for recyclable materials. We have a lot of outreach that we have to do with our staff to coach the property managers on mitigating those issues. The landfill will also be required to implement organic waste recovery activities. We do check this box here because we have a recycling park at the landfill. So we do separate construction and demolition debris, green waste, textiles. It used to be source-separated, but that is no longer a market, so we are burying those. We source-separate e-waste, households hazardous waste and drywall. SB 1383 requires businesses to comply with the organics recycling requirements. As I mentioned earlier, AB 1826 required a certain level of business who generated two or more yards of solid waste per week. 1383 requires all businesses to participate in the program regardless of their generation rates. So through AB 1826, we had roughly about 150 customers on the program where we were diverting approximately 12 tons to 19 tons per week. So that was very successful. We had significant outreach with the businesses, ongoing follow-up. Essentially, we cannot let these programs...we can't set them and forget them. They require ongoing relationships with the businesses who are participating in these programs to ensure compliance as well as minimizing contamination. You guys are all familiar with Mr. Engel and his compost facility. We have to work very hard to minimize contamination in our waste stream that is going to his facility. Anytime there's bottles, cans, plastic bags, that all impacts the quality of his compost material. Yes, so fortunately, this regulation does allow for waivers for de minimis generation as well as for space. So roughly, we have 722 businesses who qualify for waivers that are currently being waived for the requirement. A good example for de minimis generation would be a doctor's office, a dental office. They fall below the category that would trigger them to participate in the program because there's just not enough food waste being generated. So...and then we have 575 who are participants. That would include your businesses that we've had jump on the program in 2016 in regards to or pertaining to 1826. And then we've identified a lot of several other businesses and multifamily dwellings who are subscribing to green waste, organic services already. So we have scrubbed the requirements for 1383 for all businesses. And we have communicated these results to CalRecycle. And currently, they seem to be content with our results for 1383 compliance for businesses. SB 1383 also requires businesses to subscribe to organics waste collection services unless they are self-hauling organic waste. I just mentioned that. So we do have a few businesses such as a Costco who backhaul materials. They will backhaul their food waste along with the recyclables. So they will be required to take those materials to an organics processing facility or a recycling facility that handles your blue container items. They won't be allowed to dispose any of those items. Businesses who provide containers within a facility will also be required to have a three bin system. If you look at the screen, we have a sample photo of a business here in town who has a landfill container, recycling container and a compost container. They will also be required to provide education, training and inspection for employees to prevent contamination. If you look at the picture in the bottom of the screen, you can see there's some contamination there. So that is a constant challenge. I don't know if you recall going to Costco, there would be the three container systems. Most of the time, customers are going to the container that's most convenient. They're not really taking the extra time to assess what container they should be putting their materials in. They just go for what's easy for them. So that's going to be a continuing challenge for businesses who now provide a... who are required to provide a three bin system in their facilities. They will be required to maintain compliance and minimize contamination.
I guess when you say they are going to be required to comply, we couldn't even do it here in Santa Maria like in our parks to throw papers into a container or cans. And we've been trying to do this for years. I mean, these businesses aren't going to be able to comply because of the people that use those containers.
What I would envision that what will happen is businesses will have to move the materials from the...to the appropriate container. Obviously, there will be some health and safety requirements they'll have to follow to ensure that they don't create any cross-contamination issues within the facility.
Thank you, Mr. Cantu.
Who was the genius that put 1383 together?
Duly elected representatives in Sacramento.
Well, I know that. I know they came from Sacramento.
Yeah, it was 2016. I suppose we could track down who the ayes and nays were on that. But part of 1383 does put requirements on business to eliminate contamination. So they can either write this three bin, have an employee there trying to educate their customers on, no, put this one here, put this on that there. Or, you know, in the end, it's the product. Or they may have to utilize their staff to do a pre-sort prior to putting in the bins for collection. That is a requirement of 1383.
Cost, cost, cost. Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Mr. Cantu, do you foresee that...because I'm old enough to remember when we just put everything in one can. Well, do you foresee that now we may have four trash cans? I've got three at my house. I've got a green one, a blue one and a gray one. Now, do you foresee that we're now going to have a fourth one? And I'm waiting for them to come back and say, well, we want one for clear glass and one for green glass and one for dark glass and...
Mr. Cordero, Councilmember Cordero, that's an excellent question. There is a Penn and Teller video that highlights the recycling industry that I will not share with you. But I have seen draft legislation that may require a fourth container, but it has not been finalized. The concern is by putting all our food waste into our existing green waste container that we will reduce the quality of compost. Farmers may not want to purchase compost that has food waste in it. They may want to purchase compost that is only derived from green waste. So CalRecycle is kicking around legislation that may require potentially a fourth container. So Cow Recycle is kicking around legislation that may require potentially a fourth container or other means to process organic waste. We are looking at technologies where we can leave the food waste in the gray bin or refuse can, and then we would pull the organics out through a mechanical processing facility to address that issue. That technology is rather new. There is a facility in San Barbara County, the Tejus landfill, that is up and running with trying this technology, so we are keeping very close tabs on the success of their program. Go ahead, Mr. Springer.
Thank you, if I may. Councilman Cordero, you know, it seems everything old is new again. A lot of what they're looking at and what has happened with the blue bin and the recycling is that, you know, the industry has educated customers on putting things in the recycle bin and the blue bin, and you've heard us talk about recycling, and now we just feel like better people. We're not sure if it's recyclable or not, so we throw it in the blue bin, and then half somebody will sort it and figure it out. Well, those are increased costs because it slows down the production line, and that's why we've had people focus more on, you know, very specific items. To Mr. Cantu's point, in the future, there are technologies looking at basically almost going back to the old days as you discussed, a single bin. What that would compel an agency to do like ours is to take that material, dump it on a sort line or the ground, rip through all the bags, and sort it all out, whether that's manually or through optical sorters or robots, all expensive. Right now, the technology isn't there, and the scalability with essentially the size of the city of Santa Maria isn't there. As Mr. Cantu mentioned, they are just initiating a facility down on the South Coast at Tejus landfill, but all of the jurisdictions on the South Coast take their refuse there. And in fact, so does the Santa Inez Valley. So there are significantly more customers to that where they can get the economies of scale, but their rates are, their tipping fees at the landfill are about 60 to 70% higher than our current tipping fees to cover the costs of that operation. What Mr. Cantu isn't saying is that we continually evaluate this technology, look at what is the most efficient and cost-effective way for Santa Maria to meet these requirements. Right now, with the process that we have for our green waste, with the composting facility, the collecting the organics, and fulfilling the requirements of 1383, this is the most cost-effective and efficient way to move forward at this time. Not to say that as the technology evolves and it becomes more mature with respect to those biodigesters or maybe even going to that single bin. As those evolve, staff will be continuing to look at those and evaluate what is overall the best solution for the city of Santa Maria.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Springer.
Mr. Escobedo had a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I see here one of the, one of the words, it's mandatory. So basically, there's no say it on, I mean, the city is, if they just to pass it or not pass it, it will happen. And in case we both, you know, to not, the other end, there might be some consequences. What kind of consequences would this?
Councilmember Escobedo, excellent question. The regulation for SB 1383 states that jurisdictions can be fined up to $10,000 per day for not adopting our ordinance or complying with the regulation.
Say per day?
Per day.
Okay. Just 10,000 per day?
I said you pass it.
We did consider just paying them $10,000 per day instead, but probably wouldn't be good for the city.
Right.
That was, sorry.
Now I can tell it's mandatory.
It wouldn't be good for the five of us up there either.
SB 1383 also requires residents to comply with SB 1383 requirements. As I mentioned earlier, we did conduct a pilot program in April of 2021. Residents did receive a postcard in the mail prior to the program. We roughly had about 1,600 residents participate, and the purpose for this pilot program was to obtain a valuable understanding of what challenges we would be faced with prior to a citywide rollout coming January of this year. Through this process, yes, sir, Mr. Escobedo?
Sorry, I started to interrupt. With this information was also sharing in Spanish?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Significant outreach was conducted. We utilized a local media company to facilitate geo-targeted ads. So the residents that were partaking in the pilot program, we were able to share those addresses with the media company, and you were able to receive education and outreach on your mobile devices, laptops, desktop computers regarding the program in addition to the postcard that was sent in the mail. Additionally, we also replaced the green waste containers with the appropriate coloring standards consistent with the regulation, and we also replaced the refuse lids consistent with the requirements of the regulation for this pilot program. Once the program was implemented, we did conduct field assessments and evaluate the containers for contamination. Did we find issues with odors? Who was participating in the program? We also had in-person communication, and then when we delivered the containers, we also had printed material that was affixed to the green waste container as well. One of the things that we also did was we maintained our current service levels for this program, so we did not collect the materials weekly. We collected the materials, the green waste materials, as well as the food waste every other week. Just to provide a brief overview of the program statistics, roughly about 35% of the customers were participating in the program through our field audits. We found roughly about 30% contamination. If you look at the picture on the bottom right of the screen, our biggest contaminator was plastic bags. Residents were keeping their food waste in a plastic bag and then placing it into the green waste container. So we definitely did address that in our outreach education materials along with our website to help address those issues. Just to share some insight, our blue can or our residential single-stream recycling containers have roughly about 30% contamination, and that program's been in place now for almost 20 years. And looking at the initial pilot program, 30% contamination is probably not a bad thing. There's not really a whole lot of data out there. I don't have any data from other organizations who have conducted something similar, but we did learn a significant amount about customer concerns. We did receive phone calls regarding the concerns about maggots, rodents, and when we educated them about how they could mitigate those issues utilizing the refrigerators or freezers, waiting till that final day before service to get the materials out, it seemed to help some of those problems. So as you look at the picture on the top right, that material was placed in their green waste can the night before service or that morning of. In preparation for the 2022 rollout, we will also send out postcards to the residents educating them that they can now start the program. On our postcard, we do have a website link along with a QR code where they can scan the QR and get additional information about the program and how to comply with it as The city is also required to implement an edible food recovery program in order to increase commercial edible food generators' access to food recovery organizations and services. So edible food recovery, as I mentioned earlier, are items that would be consistent or compliant with California Retail Food Code, items that are prepackaged. Could be also fresh vegetables and other commodities. The city must also increase edible food recovery capacity. We will be required to assess what kind of capacity we have in the city, and if we are required to create more capacity, we will be required to help fund those initiatives to generate additional capacity within the city. The city must also ensure generators execute agreements with edible food recovery organizations and services. We must also educate generators, monitor, report, and enforce program compliance. So we have two categories or two tiers of commercial edible food generators. We have tier one and tier twos. Your tier one businesses are required to participate in the program effective January 1, 2022. These include wholesale food vendors, food service providers, food distributors, as well as grocery stores and supermarkets. Your tier two customers are required to comply with the program effective January 1, 2024. This includes hotels, restaurant facilities, health facilities, events in large venues, local education agencies with onsite food facilities, as well as state agencies or state agency cafeterias with 250 or more seats. Commercial edible food generators must recover the maximum amount of edible food. They will also be required to execute agreements with food recovery organizations and food recovery services. So your food recovery organizations are considered, your food banks could be also local nonprofits. Food recovery services could be groups who help deliver the edible food to those facilities, such as a food bank or a nonprofit. Edible food generators will also be required to maintain records of donated products, including food types and total weights. They must also submit an annual report on January, or on March of 2023 regarding their program, regarding their program compliance. It hasn't been delineated in the regulation, but essentially, it would be highlighting the total tons they received per month or generated per month and where it went to along with the total weight. We have identified roughly 46 tier one generators within the city. 11 are currently working with the food bank. So that's a positive note. We already have 11 businesses out there that are working with the food bank, so we just have to recruit an additional 35 to comply with the requirement for 2022. We've identified 35 tier two generators, and four are currently working with the food bank as well.
Mr. Cantu, who are those, you don't have to give me names, but who are those food generators, for instance?
If I recall correctly, the Albertsons is one of the generators whose supermarkets are common.
Supermarkets, okay.
There are also some restaurants who are currently working with the food banks as well.
Okay, thank you.
Food recovery organizations and services must also execute agreements with edible food generators. They also must maintain records regarding the program. They must also submit annual reports to the city, and they also will capacity and make us aware of any potential new capacity or expanded capacity that will be coming. One of the challenges with food recovery organizations and services is they don't have significant amount of staffing. Many are volunteers. So this definitely, I think, will be an additional burden to the food recovery organizations and services. That's also another reason why I think the regulation was required for jurisdictions to implement this program versus it being directly to these organizations because they don't have the funding to facilitate the requirements of this regulation by themselves. Franchise haulers and permitted haulers are also required or are also impacted by this regulation. They will be required to provide services that allow for recyclable materials, construction and demolition materials, and organic waste to be effectively recycled. The organic waste component will definitely be their biggest challenge. Most CND haulers aren't source separating organic waste, so they will have to now separate those materials. This also does include wood waste? Yes, that is correct. So they will also have to divert wood waste as well from the landfill. The franchise haulers will also be required to provide education and outreach to their customers. And lastly, they are also required to submit quarterly reports to the city regarding the total tons landfilled and recycled. This does also include that final destination of those materials as well. Self haulers will also be impacted by this regulation. They are required to transport their materials to recycling facility as well to divert their CND materials or their organic waste. If they're hauling green waste, we can handle that at our existing landfill. If they are also hauling CND materials, we can handle those materials as well at the landfill. If they have food waste, they will be required to find a destination such as a composter to divert those materials. Self haulers that are commercial businesses, including multifamily dwellings, must also report quarterly to the city the total tons landfilled as well as recycled. A residential self haul generator is not required to report or record any information for this program or this regulation. Procurement requirements. The city must procure recovered organic waste products. Based on our current per capita, we are required to procure approximately 8,600 tons of recovered organic waste annually. This includes materials such as mulch or compost, electricity from biomass, recycled paper products, renewable gas for transportation, electricity and heating. We have been working with Mr. Pasada and his team on identifying potential areas for use of additional compost throughout his parks facilities and retention basins. Obviously, one of the challenges that we will have is there's currently no funding available for procuring that significant amount of compost. So that's something we will have to continue to work with the other departments on evaluating those procurement requirements. We will also be looking at procuring additional compost at the landfill to assist us with managing erosion control, vegetation for compliance with our permit requirements as well. The city is required to monitor for compliance based on customer complaints, random inspections and audits, as well as through solid waste collection route reviews. We have the ability in our route, our collection vehicles to take photos of what's in the container or as it's being emptied into the truck. We will have to develop special routes to allow us to assess, randomly assess customers to ensure compliance with the regulation to minimize contamination. We'll be required to issue a notice of violation within 10 business days for noncompliance. The city will also be required to impose citations or fines for failure to comply. We do have a grace period?
That's rather a grace period.
That is correct. We do have a grace period for noncompliance, which is from January 2022 through December 2023. We will be conducting significant education and outreach for compliance on this program to help teach businesses as well as the residents what they can do to comply with these regulations. As I just mentioned, education outreach will be critical for us to be successful in this program. We will conduct in-person outreach. We will utilize geo-targeting ads, print material. We'll be utilizing our radio advertisements along with social media. We will also utilize television and our website. We will be reaching out to all residents, businesses, city departments, along with the food recovery organizations and tier one generators. So this definitely will be a significant undertaking for our staff to take on these new additional duties to support this regulation.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What about tier two?
We will also be, excuse me, we will also be focusing on our tier two customers come 2023. Our goal is to triage the tier one generators, and then come commencing, excuse me, 2023, we will focus on our tier two generators. If we make progress sooner, then we will jump to our tier two generators.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Just to summarize our impacts to the city and fiscal considerations, as I mentioned earlier, we will be required to revise or update our container coloring schematics for our green waste containers along with our refuse containers. We will also be assessing weekly organic collection services. If we run into a situation where Cow Recycle mandates us to have to collect refuse weekly versus every other week, or, excuse me, green waste weekly versus every other week, we will be monitoring and evaluating what kind of impacts that will have to our budget for collections.
And to the residents.
That is correct.
Because those rates are going to go up as well if you have to do, I can't, I can't see leaving it there and picking it up every other week if we're adding all these other components to it. So that's what worries me for the residents, having to pay extra for their refuse. This is just crazy.
The constituents will have to pay for it. That is wrong.
If I may, Madam Mayor.
If I may, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Waterfield. So we are currently, when we did the pilot program, we continued with the every other week pickup for the organics and the green waste mashed by the recycle. For cost wise and efficiency wise, that allows essentially the same truck and the same driver. One week does recycle, the next week green waste. The reason we did that is that it's the most cost effective. We intend at this time to roll out the organics program in the same way that we've done the pilot to minimize the cost on the ratepayers. You, you have hit the nail right on the head. The cost for organics collection and disposal with respect to solid waste is through rates. Basically, the Prop 218 rates for refuse collection. So we want to stick with that as long as we can. That's why we're going to have significant outreach on ways to ameliorate the impacts of that picking up the organics every other week. If we can get the residents, particularly, well, the residents of the businesses, we do once a week because the restaurants are whatever, large generators. But if we can get the residents to do their organics diversion in a way that reduces the impacts, right? By maybe keeping those food scraps in the fridge or freezing them and then putting them out the night before, we can stick with every other week pickup, which is a significant savings in costs. So we, we would like to, through education and outreach, try to get or maintain the service the way that we currently do it. If we get, if, if the residents don't pick up on that change, or as Mr. Cantu mentions, if CalRecycle says, nope, you have to do it every week, then we really won't have any other choice but to encumber the costs that are associated with that. Right now, we're estimating that that would be the equivalent of up to four new collections trucks and four new drivers, which is significant. Essentially, it's almost a 50% increase because right now we have, you know, two, two sets of routes. This would be the third, so.
What does this do to our new landfill, Los Flores? And this may be a silly question, but I, I've got to ask it because we have, we have cattle roaming around on that land, dropping methane gas all over the place. Is that, now, is that going to be our responsibility to mitigate that?
Councilmember Waterfield, we, short answer is, is no. Not, not with respect to that. There have been a lot of discussions around the state, and there are concerns about methane with feedlot operations and that sort of thing. But Los Flores is far from that. The part of what we're looking at, frankly, not really part of tonight's discussion, but when we look at organics diversion, we look at recycling diversion, we look at green waste diversion, the landfill practice, as all of us have known it for our lives, is significantly different. The amount that's actually intended to be buried moving into the future, CalRecycle is looking at minimizing that more and more and more. So really, it puts the whole, what I'll call the business model, of solid waste into flux because there are significant expenses related to diversion while they're still essentially the same expenses for disposing of the waste that's left, the permitting requirements, the water monitoring and that sort of thing. So it's certainly something that we're watching closely and tracking.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. Additionally, the city will be required to obviously collect significant amount of data, monitor the program, report to CalRecycle. We'll be required to continue to implement the California Business Code compliance requirements along with the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. As I mentioned earlier, we will also be required to procure recovered organic waste. Franchise haulers will be impacted regarding organics recycling. And lastly, significant outreach and education will be key to success of this program. This completes my presentation. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Springer and I are available for any questions.
Did we sound that patient? Any questions from the dais?
Not necessarily a question, but to you, Mr. Cantu, and Mr. Springer, but I mean, the message is clear, and thank you, you were, you were handed a partially built project from Sacramento and said, here, implement this new city, and it's obviously very difficult. But in boiling it all down, clearly, if everybody did the right job, it would significantly extend the life of our new facility that we haven't even started using yet out at Los Flores. It would be better for us and better for the environment if we were not burying so, so much stuff. So I, I mean, this is a good thing.
Councilmember Cordell, that is an excellent point. The state is trying to drive to zero waste. Ultimately, if we can recycle all our resources or divert them from the landfill, essentially, we can eliminate methane gas, is the theory, and extend the life of existing landfills. That is correct.
And, and thank you for the presentation. I, I know that our questions up here may have seemed a bit academic to you who's in the business, but, but it's got to be very difficult on your half to try to build a, a project for us and deliver it so that it's usable in our minds. And I'm sure we'll all grow into it to some degree, but it is a bit difficult to digest, particularly at my age.
Thank you. Mr. Springer and I have many discussions about the landfill business, and we're always looking at ways how to evolve our technology to meet these future state mandates and try to forecast what's forthcoming as well.
Yes, yes, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Soto?
What happens if we don't adopt it?
I think the $10,000 a day.
Hi, yeah, so Madam Mayor, Councilmember Soto, yes. CalRecycle has indicated that there could be penalties up to $10,000 a day, but I will defer to the city attorney.
I, I think that there would be more likely than not regulatory actions taken against the few people who stand up and say no as opposed to those who simply don't comply. Ultimately, the enforcement mechanism is in the state law. And since we regularly are regulated in other arenas, it's hard to slip under the radar, if you will. And to answer the mayor's question, the genius who sponsored this was Ricardo Laura, and he's now the insurance commissioner.
We've got, we can look forward to things there as well, huh?
I have another question. Can you explain again how we plan on, not regulating, but ensuring compliance by residents, individual, or single, or residential?
Sure, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Cordero, sorry, excuse me.
Cordero.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Education and outreach will be, will be critical for our success. We really want to minimize trying to dive down that rabbit hole for fines or penalties. Code enforcement is tapped already today. We don't have trash cops, so we will, we will rely heavily on our education and outreach with the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Stillwell, I'd like to ask you a question, or several questions. How, how much is this going to cost the city? Because ultimately, the, the ratepayers out there, I hope they're all listening, they're going to have to pay for this. And so you're talking like, we have to hire more people, we're going to have to have more trucks, we're going to have to collect all this data.
And which budget is it coming out of?
And how many people do we have to hire to accommodate this?
Yep, yeah, that's, those are important questions. Director Springer touched on them. We're, we're right now trying to implement it and roll it out within the, the framework that we now have to provide the service. But with the recognition that there'll probably be increases in demand, increase in needing to purchase vehicles. I think as Mr. Springer mentioned, you know, we're looking at million dollars for a truck and million dollar for drivers ongoing to drive those trucks, plus the compliance piece, and that would drive up rates by, I think you said 10%? Yeah, so roughly 10% rate increases for our trash customers.
Would that be on an annual basis now?
Yeah, ongoing.
Yep.
I want to ask you a question. I know up in Napa County, they had, they had this program going on like about two, three years ago. And then they, they, I think they gave each, each resident a bucket to put in to their kitchen. To empty that. And so, and that really smells.
They have the ones with the filter on it.
It really smells. That doesn't help.
Okay.
Welcome to progress.
I can't believe, yes, I can't believe we're even talking about this. This is just amazing to me. Any other questions, comments?
We're afraid to ask questions.
Explanations?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank, thank you very much. I'd, I'd like to open this up for a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, before, we have no requests to speak on this item. However, our staff did receive a written communication from Pam Gates in support of the organics ordinance.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for any more discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I, I, may I make a comment?
Certainly.
My comment, so I went on to the CalRecycle website just because I was curious. And even though this is going to be a new challenge for us and for the residents as well, I, I am hopeful that we will be able to reduce our, our waste here in this country. We are, we are really wasteful. We, we buy too much food, and then we end up throwing most of it away anyways. And so I hope that this is going to be a step in, in us being more mindful of, of what we buy and what we consume, especially when there's so many people out there that don't have enough. And that will also translate to us protecting our environment further. So it's going to be a challenge, but, but thank you for the presentation and for, for leading us in this. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
The motion as recommended. Introduce an ordinance for the first reading and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption, adding new chapter 821 to Title 8 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code Regulating Mandatory Organic Waste Disposal Reduction.
No second doubt, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
No, ceremonial, but no.
Yep.
Motion carries. You said this, this individual is now the Commissioner of Insurance?
Yes, yes.
Look out.
Thank you.
Stay tuned, more to come. Absolutely.
The next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will entertain nominations for the position of Mayor Pro Tem for a term of one year.
And staff report to be made by Mr. Stillwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So historically, the assignment of Mayor Pro Tem has been periodically rotated amongst council members on an annual basis, each calendar year. There are no formal rules, policies or procedures as how the selection of Mayor Pro Tem is made. The duties of Mayor Pro Tem include acting on behalf of the mayor in the mayor's absence, and the Mayor Pro Tem presides at city council meetings when the mayor is absent. The Mayor Pro Tem also fills in for the mayor at various community functions and meetings when the mayor is unavailable. On December 15, 2020, last year, Mayor Patino nominated and the City Council ratified Councilmember Waterfield to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for calendar year 2021. It's now time for the mayor to consider nominating a council member to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the calendar year 2022. After Mayor Patino makes her nomination, a majority of the City Council will be required to ratify the appointment, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondents or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor and council members.
Okay, then I would, at this point, like to nominate Councilmember Cordero as Mayor Pro Tem for the year, calendar year 2022.
Second.
So I have a nomination and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I would like to say that I appreciate your appointment and look forward to working more closely with you again and representing you whenever the need comes up.
Thank you. The next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Two reports tonight. First, I'd like to recognize a longtime city employee, Jeff Bedega. Mr. Bedega retired last Friday, December 17, after a long illustrious 36-year work history with the city of Santa Maria. In his role as senior crew leader and maintenance specialist, Mr. Bedega played a critical frontline supervisor role with the Streets Division in Public Works. He was the, the striping guy, so when you see the consistent striping, the, the good-looking streets that we have in the community where they're visible both at night and it rain, it's due to his hard work. He worked effectively with many stakeholders to deliver effective and efficient services. His leadership team praised his work as he consistently, effectively supervised, influenced and guided the work efforts of crew members. The city wishes to recognize Jeff's loyalty and dedication on such a career milestone and his part on maintaining the performance standards and a strong commitment to service excellence. We know that achievement and success are not by accident, and on Jeff's retirement, the city wishes to express its sincere appreciation and wishes Jeff a happy retirement. Some, some employees come here for retirement resolutions, others prefer not to, but we do want to recognize all those who have served our community as Jeff has. Also, I want to mention the next meeting of the City Council is January 4. We do have a few retirement resolutions for that meeting as well. And the monthly, the business of the month, again, will come to the City Council. And the regular business item is a few of the city's boards and commissions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So we'll go to reports, oral reports of City Council. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, during this last two weeks, we've had a couple of meetings with United Way, and if you can believe it, we've been meeting on the rodeo already. And quite frankly, we're just praying that we're not in the middle of any sort of a pandemic or endemic issue at that time, but we're already starting to work on that. Yesterday, I attended a very well-attended ceremony out at the Santa Maria Police Department. There was a badge pinning for a, a young officer that, that was recently brought on board, and there were a series of promotions that, moving around in the department that Chief Snyder mentioned. There was a real large group of people, and you've been to several of them, and it's just nice to see that many people show up for a badge pinning like that. I keep waiting for my opportunity to say how my badge pinning was, and it was quite a bit different than it is there today.
Mr. Escobedo?
Not to report.
Ms. Waterfield?
I don't have anything to report, but I just want to wish everyone a very merry, safe Christmas and a very prosperous new year, and if you're traveling, be careful and just have a wonderful time with your family and friends.
Ms. Soto?
Madam Mayor, no reportable items. However, I would like to request that at, at our next agenda, we, we, we discuss the mobile home ordinance.
Thank you. On December 8, I had the North County Subregional Meeting. I also did the Santa Maria Workshop Planning with Jan Perkins. That'll be coming up in February. I testified at Santa Barbara County Redistricting Commission Meeting. And for some of you out there may not realize, in November, you have once, if you live in City of Santa Maria, you're in District 5, and some of you will be in District 4, and you probably won't realize that until November comes along. December 9, I attended a downtown Friday Thank You Luncheon and did the news conference announcement for the state grant that we got for 6.2 million for our sports complex. That was, yeah, that was exciting. Guadalupe was excited for what they got too because they'll be getting, they'll be getting money too. December 10, did the graduation and reception and ceremony of the Leadership Sanria Valley. of the Leadership Sanria Valley Class of 2021. Did a Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Board Meeting. On December 13, I had the teen council meetings. And again, I attended the County of Santa Barbara redistricting. Those last two redistricting meetings were sort of exciting because it flipped things around once Steve Lavigna was not the 5th District Supervisor, and then at the last meeting, it was flipped back in. December 14, I'm also paying attention to the Santa Maria Joint Union High School redistricting meetings, and that was on the 14th. December 15, I attended the CCE Special Meeting of the Policy Board, which is our electric grid. The rates are going to be going up on that electric, on our electricity with the organization, the 3C organization that we are now part of. Did the briefing for SB CAG. On December 16, attended SB CAG Monthly Board Meeting in the morning, the APCD Board Meeting in the afternoon. And on the 17, I did help distribute toys with the Central Coast Rescue Mission 2021 banquet. And let's see, and attend the badge pinning yesterday, and I went out to Vandenberg Air Force Base to attend the second birthday of the Space, U.S. Space Force. And I think that is it. Anything else from the dais?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to mention, you mentioned Fighting Back. That is a really effective commercial that they've made on the no drinking for the kids in the car. I've seen that several times, and I wanted to mention that to you personally.
Thank you.
And that's just an outstanding display on part of those young people.
And I also would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas out there. And like I said, next November, you're going to figure out you are no longer in the 5th District, you are in the 4th District. So you might want to check on that. And anything else? That's it?
Oh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I just want to mention that I also, I participated, I attended a ceremony for the grant, so I'm really excited. My district is really excited about it. And also participate in the redistricting session, so, yeah, thank you.
And we'll be doing more, we'll be doing a redistrict here for our city. Okay, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Meeting is adjourned.